...behind me just in that little strip.
I don't know.
Three boys slapping me off out of him then. It just wears me down.
And I could have passed. There was nobody, nobody came to the back.
I'm sure he pulled over and rocked it up.
Yeah, just soon as I got a place, I could get out and just out the window, honk and moan.
Should've just, should've skipped out.
That's what I usually do. If I get mad, I'll just let her stay back here. You're really all much better off because you can't, they don't matter what you do, they're going to just be mad.
Before we start, Chris, can I borrow you out of the hallway for just a second? I got a question on your letter here.
Sure.
And I don't want to stand up here and look stupid.
It's a short again. I'm looking at a lot of paperwork.
I have this part of the character meeting in the morning of the weeks, months.
Do you remember that?
Sorry, I was about one day and yeah.
The other thing I did, uh... Oh, that very fun.
Have an HWC.
Yeah, and I'm sharing now.
We're ready.
Is it colored? That ordinance with it.
Yeah, it's red. All rise. Whoever has the flag to the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First up is Nikki with the travel request.
You should have two travel requests. One from the patrol service officer. He had a last minute invite to a district conference on September 23rd. There was no cost to attend this. He said to me as quickly as possible was after the last meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
A second. unanimous.
And you should have a request from the extension of office for Stacy to attend the Purdue Southeast area support staff meeting in November. It's just mileage there to inform that will come out of their extension travel budget line.
Make a motion to approve.
A second. unanimous. Am I missing a folder or... Because I didn't have the travel request. Was I supposed to have it?
She's leaving.
Okay, I'm just gonna sign yours. Nikki.
Thank you.
Is that all you had? Next up, I guess we're going to revisit the magistrate position or referee position.
First of all, I want to thank all of you for allowing me to speak here today. I apologize for not being here last time as I was receiving a certificate for graduating from the Indiana Indiania Traditional College and required to be at the Indiania Traditional meeting. First of all, I want to give you the data that you requested. As of September 29th, 2025, there are 509 cases currently pending in District Circuit Court. 66 new cases were filed there in the last 30 days. I have 91 hearings currently set next month. 23 working days averages that about four hearings a day. Five of those are set for three hours. You can view my calendar online at public.courts.iam.gov. However, it is possible that some of the hearings may not appear there as they're confidential and involve juveniles. There are currently 131 people in the jail. Currently, it costs an average of $52.61 per day or $19,202.65 per year to keep an adult who may be incarcerated in the state of Indiana. Prior to my appointment and the increase in programs that my being here has allowed, the jail population was 180 in 2018. This reduction in jail population has resulted in a savings to the county of $940,929.85. Currently, I preside over all the horses or domestic relation cases, 40 child support cases, and all juvenile matters, including children in need of services cases and juvenile delinquency cases. Due to the nature of these case types, much of what I do is confidential and I've not done a good job sharing our successes with you or the community. I hope to be given an opportunity to rectify that. We're currently in the process of becoming a Juvenile Detentional Turnipness Initiative, or JDAI, county with a launch date of October 17th. JDAI brings in programs to help the youth in our community and offers different ways to deal with juvenile delinquency other than detention. Some of the programs that we currently have include the Attended Engaged Program that I brought based on Judge King's program over in Ripley County to Jennings County. AEP has dropped chronic absenteeism in the Jennings County schools from 17.13% in 2023 prior to the implementation of the program to less than a percentage in elementary schools so far this year. I think there's only one child in each school that may have a potential issue. We're also having a meeting to discuss additional programs to partner with the schools to address the truancy in older youth. And due to the success from last year, we've been moving to include middle and high school students this year, but I think it would be more apt to use a different program due to the differences in child's development. Prior to my starting in the position, the meeting dates for permanency or when a child would get a forever home in the case actually closes in children in need of services cases in Jennings County was 866 days in 2020. I dropped this number drastically to 309 days. This is a reduction of 64.5% from where Jennings County was, which is impressive on its own. But even more so when you consider it's one-third less than the current statewide median according to the Child Welfare Core Performances Measures. When we're able to do this because of increased judicial oversight. Prior to me being appointed, review hearings were set every six months in chin's cases and permanency hearings were set at every year, the bare minimum that's required by statute. That due to congestion. I saw this and knew that we could do better. So I instigated a policy where we do initial facilitations prior to fact finding hearings so that the permanent child services and parents can start off on a more positive note. Previously, we used to have fact finding hearings where the permanent child services would be required to say in front of the parents why you're a terrible parent and prove to the court why you need to take your child. Obviously, that doesn't start things off on a very productive note when someone tells you that you're terrible and then we expect you to work with them the next day. It makes them being resentful and unwilling to participate. Being part of potential agreement due to facilitation makes a party more likely to participate. We also started doing pre-trial conferences a month after disposition to make sure things were going as expected and addressed any outstanding issues. Setting review hearings every three months and permanency hearings every six months. So we're having more than double the hearings that were previously done as the court calendar did not allow it. If I'm here, if I'm not here, then cases will likely go back to how they were before just due to the encased caseload. Foster parents receive between $27.01 and $77.34 per day depending on the age and needs of the child. There are currently 56 children in need of services cases as of August of 2025 in Jennings County. Approximately 75% of DCS cases are in out of home placement and approximately 45% of those cases are in foster care. So we take 56 cases times 507 days times 75% times 45%, we get 188 days. That data results in a savings to the taxpayer of somewhere between $258,817 on the low end and $741,095 on the high end. And this is without regards to the amount of money that was services that have been eliminated due to this reduction in time. Now, every case is different, but I included a current rates list for the permanent child services for what they pay for the different services in your packet that I provided. Some common expenses include that if a child in foster care would be $76.10 for supervised visitation, outpatient treatments for individuals is $86.11 per hour or about $40 if it's in a group setting. All these services would occur for multiple hours, multiple times per week per family. We also have our Family Recovery Court. This is an intensive program for parents that have substance use disorder, are high risk, high need, and want to change their life to get off drugs. Again, more information is in your packet, but we've had great success. Nationally, 77% of state prisoners are arrested within nine years of release, illustrating the cyclical cycle of addiction and crime when underlying needs go unaddressed. By comparison, participants in problem solving courts consistently demonstrate reductions in rearrest and reincarceration by 30 to 50% compared to traditional case processing. Currently, in our Family Recovery Court, we have a less than 10% recidivism rate in our graduates. We've also had about 30 people have joined our Family Recovery Court. A study by All Rives, formerly the National Association of Drug Court Professionals, found that treatment courts save an average of $6,000 per participant. That's $180,000 in savings to taxpayers. The same study shows that each graduate brings in $25,921 in economic benefits. We've had about 20 people graduate. So that's $518,000, or $518,420 in economic benefits to our community. This program does not just save families. It adds sober, productive, employed, taxpaying citizens to our populace. I know there were a lot of things brought up in the previous two hearings. I gave a lot of information to you prior to being here at the first hearing that we had and also the packet that I sent last week and also the information that I gave to you today. It's a lot of things to go through. So I wanted to highlight a few things for address concerns with the myths and facts handout. First, the big news headlines, three judges doing what one used to do. As even Mark Dove admitted during the meeting, there was also a city court in Jennings County at the time. So there were actually two judicial officers back in 1980. Officially, there were only two part-time prosecutors, about four law enforcement officers, and five to six people in jail. Today, we have four full-time prosecutors, about 40 law enforcement officers between the sheriff's department and the North Burness Police Department, and approximately 130 people in jail. That's over 10 times the amount of officers and 20 times the amount of jail population. Yet, we're being asked to believe that the amount of judicial oversight should stay the same as it was 40 years ago. Violent crime has also increased from three cases in 1980 to 24 cases in 2025. Yet, we're still being asked to believe that nothing has changed since 40 years ago. Most people don't know that a judge's work does not stop when they leave the bench. We have to serve as special judge in other counties, draft orders, and deal with thousands upon thousands of filings with the court. Just because we're not setting hearings at the end of the day does not mean that we're not working. Additionally, setting hearings late in the afternoon will result in overtime for our staff when hearings inevitably go off the allotted time. We're also required to have time in our schedule to set emergency hearings. Regularly, I must set emergency detection hearings within 48 hours of a child being detained. If there were no spots in my calendar to set those hearings, those trials with children would be potentially returned to an unsafe environment and would potentially open up the county potential lawsuits. I also believe that there was some misunderstanding with regards to the salary that was requested for the position. I am not asking for a raise. I would actually be taking a pay cut to stay here with the loss of my retirement. My current salary is $146,407.82. The total toss to the county, if you were to provide me benefits, would be the $175,000 that was mentioned previously. Mark Dove was also right that I could likely make a lot more money if I went into private practice. That being said, I'm not doing this to make money. I'm doing this to make Jennings County a better place. I love Jennings County. I grew up here. I went to school here. I have my home here. I want my home to be the best place that it can be. I want my children to grow up in the county that I grew up in and for it to be so much better than it was when I was younger. We have so many exciting things happening in Jennings County right now. The new parks, the walking trails, businesses, the revitalization of downtown, but we also have exciting things that no one is talking about in our juvenile justice system and our recovery community with the Family Recovery Court that I preside over and the expansion of our problem solving court services with the Adult Recovery Court that Judge Bright is starting. At the last commissioner's meeting, it was brought up that no one believes that the position is necessary other than the three judges. I've enclosed letters to you from, and your materials from multiple community leaders that have experiences with juveniles, including the Jennings County Schools, Advocates for Children, Indiana Office of Court Services, attorneys that have actually practiced in front of me, and more that believe that it is the utmost important that we keep this position. Last time we were here, I was telling you that I would work to secure funding for the recovery position. I've worked hard and have secured approximately $170,000 for the position from YJOC grants. This would be approximately $85,000 a year for two-year period. It's my understanding that these funds are specifically for me to serve as a referee. I've enclosed the grant application and the award letter for your review of my material. They have since asked me to remove the match requirement and to fund 29% of the salary for the position for the two grants. That's where we have the $85,000. I've also found a way to fund the remainder of the position without additional burden to the Indiana taxpayer. We currently have $210,000 that has not been used in the Title IV D Incentive Fund 8895 that can only be used for child support enforcement purposes. I've talked to the prosecutor and he would support the use of Fund 8895 to supplement my salary if the county creates the referee position. Restricted opioid settlement funds can only be used to support programs to address opioid use disorder and a Family Recovery Court would be eligible use of those funds. There are hundreds of thousands of dollars that are currently in that fund that has already been given to the county as a result of the settlement. We are in a different position than we were last time. My proposal would be to grant the position for a period of two years, last funded with the grant funds, and then the remaining amount split between the 8895 fund and the opioid settlement funds. Allow me to come into the council or the commissioner's quarterly to present a report of all the good work that we're doing and see whether it makes sense to continue to allow the position. The numbers do not lie. $940,000 from the jail, a minimum of $250,000 to $740,000 from foster care reductions, $180,000 of savings from FRC participants, unknown amount of savings from deduction of treatment for those people, and economic benefits from graduates, $518,420. So we're talking about potentially 1.9 million to 2.4 million of potential benefits to Indiana and our community that we would be letting go away without the position. We've already come up with a way to get it. We have the $170,000 from the grant. We have a way to have that without intervening to the taxpayer players. You can do this today. We do not even have to go before the council to request additional funding. It would be my opinion that without dedicated judicial leadership, these programs risk being delayed, underutilized, or discontinued, and we cannot allow that to happen. Thank you for your time and consideration. Do you have any questions for me?
I got a call me. You threw an amazing amount of numbers at us in a very short period of time.
No, but I completely understand that.
But I want to commend you on the job that you've done there and also with your presentation today. I mean, I know that that took a lot of work for you to put that together and, you know, if nobody else says anything, I appreciate what you've done. Now, with that being said, I hate what you've done because I came to this meeting with the preconceived notion that we already ruled on this two weeks ago and we weren't going to revisit it and I knew exactly how I felt. But I'm a numbers guy and that's why I asked you four weeks ago for the numbers. And we didn't get them, so we ruled on it a couple of weeks ago. But now looking upon the numbers, I'm going to be honest with you. I need to go home and look through all this stuff because there's just no way. I've never made a decision I didn't think willy-nilly, on a whim. And you threw so much information at us, I don't care how good you were listening in the audience, do what? I honestly, you've made me like think that I need to look at it more. I don't know how these two guys feel. If one of them wants to make a motion that we already ruled on this and we don't want to revisit it and the other one seconds it, I'm out. But to me, and I'm not big on tabling things, but I really feel like I need to go look at some of this stuff and then we'll take a few comments from the crowd. But, I mean, what's you guys' thoughts?
Are some other people want to speak?
Okay. Thank you.
Amy is first.
I commend you. And I don't speak about the programs. That was a lot for me. I am the court reports. I would want to review those numbers myself. My office was not asked for those numbers, so I kind of have to make sure of that. Where I commend is in the 8895 fund. That fund is set up with a cooperative agreement with the clerk's office and prosecutor's office. That meaning that we have to do cooperation with the state of Indiana. Those are federal funds. And they are to be used only for the Title IV D Incentive Fund 8895. Can only be used for child support. That's that child support enforcement purposes. That's the first thing in that. So the 8895 fund is strictly for that. It also is only for those who have cooperative agreements with the state of Indiana. I've not heard of anything yet. And this office can get a cooperative agreement with the state. I checked yesterday and at this point, I'm not aware of one. If we use those funds for something other than what the state approves, we are misusing federal funds. So no, this cannot be ruled on today with that in mind. And I would ask that you please take that and please get with those individuals to know that. They will be in Sarah's office, one of them will be October 16th for a meeting. That's who I use. That's who at least Sarah cooperates with. And they can begin that cooperation, cooperative agreement with the state. Meaning that my office does, and I know Brian's office, the prosecutor, does time studies. They have to come in and do a study of what our office does with 4D participants. It cannot be used for anything else. I'm federally obligated for that. And everything has to be monitored. I bought a screen protector for my computer for when people come in the door. It was $20. I got roped up because there were other individuals that would come in and see that. I could only use a small portion of that, the percentage of 4D participants versus the money we're awarded. That was the only amount that could go. So those studies are very important and very necessary and they take at least time to set in because they would have to go in and review the cases that Chris Doran or his office reviews and then go back and do those calculations. If we misuse those funds, we will put all of our federal funds in that program at jeopardy. They will be removed. They are firm. And I ask that you review that. That's... Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the crowd ready? Go.
I think most of you know who I am, but I'm John Webster. I was a circuit court judge for 24 years. I don't mean to sound pompous or toot my own horn, but I probably have more knowledge of what goes on in that courtroom than anyone else in this room. What I saw in 24 years was a transformation in our court system. When I took office in 1997, Judge Greathouse had one full-time secretary and one part-time secretary. There's at least four or five secretaries there now to cover the change in workload. We didn't have an armed security officer at the front door. We didn't have security cameras in the courtroom. Those things are a result of a change in our society and a change in the way we have to do business. We could sit here all day and discuss what changed, what happened in our society, what happened in our county. It's probably not one single factor. It's probably just a change in our society in general. It's probably a change in the transancy, the people coming in and out of our county, a change in culture, the people coming in and out of our county. It has created a huge increase, not only in the number of criminal cases, but in the tentacles that they create. When a person is charged with a drug crime, probably right along with that, we see abandoned children, neglected children, financial problems. And those things all require more court time. One of the main complaints that I heard when I was serving as judge, and Mr. Dove was one of those people, he came and said, Judge, it's going to take me two months to get a hearing. I need a hearing yesterday. It wasn't just him, it was all lawyers. The legal system is such that people need things done today. They need it done yesterday. And they don't want to wait three months for a hearing. And if you don't have the staff to have hearings, it just doesn't happen. I couldn't get all my judicial or juvenile judges cases done in a timely manner because there just wasn't time in the day to do it. I told many people I could work 16 hours a day and still not got my caseload completed. That creates problems not only for the people who need to get into court, but creates problems with funding because the state and federal government require the same things be done within a certain time period. Things have changed. They aren't what they were in the good old days. Education has changed. Farming has changed. Medicine has changed, some for the good, some for the bad. We have to keep pace with what's going on in our judicial system. And I don't think that any of our judicial officers, whether it's Judge Bright, Judge Smith, or Magistrate Doran, are coming in here to ask you for help because they're lazy and don't want to work. That's just not the case. And I think anybody who practices and knows courts knows that. Are they sitting up on the bench every day? No, and neither did I. You sit there, but you have administrative things you need to take care of. Your phone rings all night long from police officers needing this sign and that sign. I can't think of the number of times I was on vacation with my family, my phone would ring. You need to be available and you have to be available 24 hours a day. So to judge how much work's getting done over there by whether or not the judge is sitting up on the bench in that row is just, it's just inaccurate. It's not correct. And I think anybody that practices who knows that. So I'm here to lend my support to these judicial officers who need some help to get the work done so that the litigants can get into court quicker and get the relief they need. How do you tell a mother or a father who needs a custody hearing to determine who's going to take the children? Well, it's going to be four months until we can get you into court. In the meantime, you two can keep beating on each other and the kid's going to keep being neglected. That's what's going on if you don't have the people to do it. How do you tell a criminal defense attorney, well, I don't know if we can have a bond hearing except two or three weeks from now? They're in your ear two or three times saying, Judge, I need a hearing quicker than that. I can't wait two or three weeks. My client needs to get out of jail. His mother and father are bugging me to death to get him out of jail. Sorry, we don't have enough people to do it. That's what's going on. It's a change. It's not the good old days. The good old days, as Magistrate Doran referred to, we had two city police cars and two or three police officers, a few sheriff's cars. The jail was up here in the old building. There were five or six people in there. And it just isn't the way it was. And to look back 40 years ago and say, well, that's the way it used to be, so that's the way we need it to be today, that's just wrong and it's inaccurate. So I would ask for your support in giving these people the relief they need. Any questions?
Thank you for today and thank you for your many years of service.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you, buddy. Anybody else going?
Good morning.
Morning.
My name's Jamie Greathouse and I've served in some capacity with Advocates for Children for the past 12 years. And I'm a Jennings County native and a current resident. I'm here to speak on behalf of the children in our community who have been abused, turned and affected and who rely on the courts to protect them. Before Magistrate Doran's position was created, children sometimes waited years for permanency. As Judge Doran mentioned, in 2020, the median time to permanency was 866 days. That's nearly two and a half years waiting. With Magistrate Doran, our number has dropped to 309 days. That's a child finding stability a year and a half sooner. And for a child, that's a lifetime. Why the change? Because children's cases are now heard every three months instead of every six. If an urgent issue arises, we can request a hearing and the court calendar is flexible enough that we can have it scheduled quickly instead of waiting weeks or even months. That added oversight holds parents accountable, keeps DCS on track with services, and most importantly, keeps children safe. I know there are concerns about funding, but as Magistrate Doran said, this position is basically paid for. They have more than $170,000 secured for the next two years. The rest can come from federal child support dollars along with opioid settlement funds. None of this will raise local taxes. In fact, quicker permanency reduces costs by lowering foster care expenses and preventing families from cycling multiple times through the system. Some have questioned whether Jennings County needs this role. The reality is that recent changes in state law, House Bill 1605 for those taking homes, means CASA will be... means CASA will be requesting more hearings. Foster parents will be asking for time to say their piece in court, and timelines are tighter and cannot be late. The need for judicial oversight is higher than ever. And for those who suggest the courts have downtime, I would say this. What I see is that the court is now flexible enough that cases are allowed the right amount of attention. Families are getting timely hearings. Children are reaching permanency faster, and the work is being done thoroughly and thoughtfully, and that may not be possible squeezed into a tighter docket. Having room in that schedule for urgent matters is a sign of a healthy court system. I want to leave you with this. The creation of Magistrate Doran's position in 2021 has been the single most meaningful improvement in child welfare in Jennings County in my 12 years of service. I've never seen our courts function more smoothly or make a greater difference in children's lives than they do right now. Losing this position will cause harm to children. Keeping it will harm no one. It's the most fiscally responsible choice before you. The funding is already secured. It does not raise local taxes, and by reducing the time children spend in foster care, it saves money. The magistrate position protects children and protects county resources at the same time. Children cannot be here today, speak for themselves. They depend on us to make decisions that put their needs first. I ask that you can approve the position so that Jennings County's most vulnerable children are not the ones who have to be oppressed. With Magistrate Doran, cases move faster, children are safer, and the county spends less money, and that is what good government looks like. Thank you for your time and your time.
Thank you.
Ellie, I have one quick question. I think you can answer. If it's not approved, that the 8895 fund could be used to supplement the needed funding, is there enough in the opioid settlement money to cover the rest of the salary without the 8895 fund?
There is. There was money that you assigned to J-RAC to use, and there's still funds left in that. Of course, the J-RAC would have to approve that, which I think they would have no issue doing. But then we'd also have to dip in further into some of the unrestricted opioid settlement funds. But I don't know what that balance is. I know it's somewhere in the 200 to 300,000. And that's the unrestricted. So that's, or, excuse me, I'm saying that wrong. That's the restricted. That's the part that can only be used on, you know, battling substance use, not the, you can buy whatever you've got in a coffee machine with it. So yes, there is enough, but I also believe Magistrate Doran has their county in agreement with the courts to use some of that, what I call the 4D funds money, that can be done as well. And you said it coming on October 16th.
Do you have a cooperative agreement, Ellie, with the state of Indiana?
We do not have an agreement, but we also need a position to start that process. So if we weren't going to get a position today, what's the point of trying to get? We can. We're one of the eligible.
But that currently, the funds that are sitting there currently were gained by the work that my office did as well as the prosecutor. So I don't know why I'm not in these conversations when you're looking at budgets. I don't know how you, in fact, decided that. But I don't want to be federally audited on the money that you guys would utilize.
I believe the conversations that we've had was that Brian was willing to give his portion, share part of his portion.
And so that's both, right? It's not, it's cooperative between us.
It could be for all organizations or different organizations that are part of that.
And I have had conversations, and again, it cannot be awarded to a non-cooperative agreement-based office.
Well, then I guess that would be something we would get all the way to discuss. I mean, and one word is not limited to.
So basically, what I'm getting out of this conversation goes back to what I said like 10 minutes ago, was we're not prepared to be able to make a decision on this today because the only way I'm going to vote for this is if it's that no additional funds come out of the taxpayer's pocket. Now.
That includes benefits.
Correct. So as long as that money is coming out of where you said, I don't really see where anyone could really complain about it because it, I mean, it's a no-brainer. If you're getting kids through this system, who wouldn't want to do that? You can't even put a dollar figure on that, but I do know that with the budgeting process with the council, we're talking about eliminating any positions that, you know, someone quits or retires. We're not going to fill those just because of basically money. But if you guys have it all worked out, and it sounds like you need to have a discussion with the clerk and with Brian and whatever, and then come in here when you're 100% sure that you have all of the funding required with no additional taxpayer dollars to supplement this position, then you know, I'm willing to look at it again. I don't know how these two guys feel, but that's where I'm at.
Well, I suppose the ultimate, if there is no cooperative agreement that can be reached between the courts, the clerk, and the prosecutor, then we would be coming back and saying, just requesting. And I hope that's not the case. I hope there can be an agreement reached. But what, there is enough opioid settlement fund if you would authorize it.
So I want to make sure you understand. It's the cooperative agreement needs to be between you and the state of Indiana for 4D funds. And from my knowledge, then, they would do an assessment of the files and things, the cases that you touched with the 4D, and they would then give you the percentage that could go towards Chris's job on that. That's how that works. So we have a percentage we're allowed to gain towards what we do on those, which is different than what you do.
And those people are having October 16th, you said?
And I can give you a number, Ellie, to get in contact with who I know with, and then you help tremendously on all of that.
And you see that, that'd be great because we can try to meet them out of here and explain what we're trying to do.
I don't think any of us want to go through a federal audit for misuse funds. And that's where I'd like to make sure that when I read that that was in what you hoped to attain.
I'm just assuming we wouldn't use all those opioid funds for...
Well, I mean, I'm going to be honest with you. I would feel a whole lot better about it if we were using a combination of the two rather than to completely deplete one account, if we're going to even do this. But with all that information that Chris threw at me, I always thought I was pretty smart, but I had smoke rolling out of my ears with all the numbers and percentages that he was throwing at me, so I don't really feel like I'm...
I mean, I'm going to be honest. I'm still at the assumption that the state did. I mean, they did the study when they added Chris's position. They did a study again. I mean, I don't think it's my position to sit here and go through all this and make that decision to spend other people's money because whether it's a grand or what, it's still taxpayer dollars in my eyes, but that's just where I'm at.
If we don't use that grand, though, it goes back to the state.
I get it, but I'm just saying, I did, nobody come to us and told us all this information prior to Chris being hired like we was, you know, everybody was way behind on caseloads. All that. I never heard one word of this.
That was before you, respectfully.
I know, but I was here, I heard, you know, I still heard about it. But I'm just saying, nobody come and asked all that, and now you're saying, you know, that two can't do it. I mean, I'm just at the point of saying the state's, you know, done the study. I'm not here to argue with it myself.
I tend to agree with that. I mean, it's not, it's not an issue of whether you've done a good job or... Everything is presented in favor of how good a job that you've done. But is there, is there enough workload for three? Is the question. And that's what the state says, is that there's not.
Well, looking at the numbers, if you take a look, as of last year, the numbers were 2.1, which is more than two. So regardless, two judges will be doing more than what they're allowed to do. And that's fun. Those numbers were referring to state-paid judicial officers. That's why they allow the creation of referee or permissioner positions to fill that gap. That's why that even exists for to be able to deal with these issues. The numbers are an important thing to consider, but they're only one part of the puzzle. What happens, like I said last time, in Marion County is not what happens in Jennings County, and it shouldn't be. We're different provinces. And that being said, all of the programs, all of the things that we've been doing, the multiple hearings twice as often, we are not required to do those, so they are not reflected in those numbers. So do we want to throw away $1.5 million just because it's not exactly what the numbers say? The numbers say we're saving millions of dollars by having been. It would be fiscally irresponsible not to utilize that. But, I mean, one of the things that I know you guys like are match funds because it's free money. You're getting a match from somewhere else. My salary in its entirety, so 175 including benefits, 1.5 million. You're getting a 1 to 6 ratio benefit for what you're paying, and I'm not asking you to pay anything. That being said, if we did not want to use the 8895 funds, there's another way to deal with 4D funds that way. It's 4D reimbursement, which we're not going to do because we can't pay anything, but that's more fiscally responsible anyway. You pay originally, and then you get reimbursed two-thirds. And that would be additional money, but I understand your position. You don't want to spend any taxpayer money, and that's perfectly fine. But that's another way to get around it if you did not want to deal with the 8895 fund issue.
The thing is with the...
And obviously, we would come up with an agreement before we would ask for any funds because obviously we want to do things right by the book.
There has to be a study done and a percentage, and to my knowledge, it's only a low percentage in the county. So I think we need to do that study and find out where you're at if you want to touch the 4D funds.
Another problem we've had with, not this situation, but others, when people come and say, "We're going to do this with grant money. We're going to do whatever." It never works out the way they say, and it ends up costing us money. I'm sorry, but that's just the way it's been working.
Well, at that point, and I was going to bring this up. You said you would suggest that if we did do it, we would prove it for two years. I can tell you right now, I wouldn't do that. I would, I would be one year max, and then at the end of that one year, if the grants all came in the way they said, and I could see that it was actually a zero tax burden, then I would prove it for the second year. That would be, I mean, so I'm throwing some stipulations out there, bitch. So does anybody else in the crowd have anything? But I got to ask, I guess where I'm at with this is, I think what I was hearing from you guys is you don't need any additional time. You just say, stand by with what we voted on last week? Or do you want more time to review it and then vote on it later?
Like I said, I'm fine with leaving it as is myself. Like I said, I don't think it was my job to figure this out.
I just want to give one example on how those numbers can be skewed so easily in a year.
Judge, can you come to the mic so we can get you? Thanks.
Yes, thank you. Just how those numbers can be skewed one way or the other, especially in small rural areas like ours or counties. So those numbers were based on a time study that we did in 2024, where judges cut time of what they were doing in the day. And then that's how, and then so many cases were given so much, broken into minutes of how many minutes they took. And so in 2024, there were, I'm positive, zero murders filed, okay? Murder takes 5,000 minutes, whereas like a level six felony takes 54 or something like that. In 2025, I believe we've had at least one murder filed and one attempted murder. So if we would have done that study in '25, we would not be anywhere near the bottom, losing a magistrate. It's simply based on the way the crime happened in certain years. So if we want to just take it for what it is and say, that's, you know, and say bad luck, that that was a good year. We didn't have any murders. But that's what we want, right? But the next year, if we would have done it, Jennings County wouldn't have been anywhere near the bottom because of that. So that's how those numbers can be skewed so easily with just two simple things like that. So just more food for thought.
My recommendation is that we take two weeks and we make the final decision in two weeks. If you guys think you don't need to do that, you've already got your minds made up. One of you make a motion, the other one second. We'll go from there.
I'll make a motion that we leave it as it stands.
A second.
And I'm actually going to vote no because I wanted two more weeks to review it, so. With that being said, Chris, buddy, I hate it because I think you are doing an excellent job. I hope it works out however. You're a good guy, and I know that you're going to be great at whatever you do. All right, we'll move right on. Next up, we need to lift the burn ban and sign that document.
I'm going to make a motion to sign it.
I'll say.
Unanimous, and I will sign that. Next, we have an HWC agreement that is with the litigating with the state for the unapproved unofficial or approved unofficial detours.
You say that's...
I don't think that's what I... I think the HWC is engagement agreement for CCMG consulting.
It's just for the PACAM.
It's the retainer.
Somebody's calling me to ask if we had an agreement with the, dealing with the litigation for the unofficial detour.
No, I said what he's wanting to sign is the retainer. I'll make a motion to sign the HWC agreement.
I'll say.
unanimous. That's what I'm looking for. Here it is. It is the judge's second.
Second.
Yeah.
Is your big soccer season over? Yes, thank goodness.
Next, we had Alex.
There's a few things. This is the busiest meeting I've had in months. There's a settlement agreement with the EEOC and the Civil Rights Commission pertaining to a pending matter. This has been approved by liability insurance, and I just need a signature on the settlement agreement.
I'm going to make a motion to sign it.
I'll say.
Unanimous.
Second, there's an ordinance to create a 911 Steve Grant Fund. 911 received a grant for, I believe it's updated, veteran G.I.S. in terms of address mapping. I can't remember it exactly, but I think that's what it's for. We need a grant fund created for that.
Make a motion to approve.
Say.
unanimous.
Lastly, I'd ask Jerry Lamb to come up. And Matt, I don't know if you want to talk about this. This is the last minute.
Yeah, the opportunity has became, I guess, came to fruition that the property right next to our Jennings County Health Department has come up for sale, and it's really, really cheap. And our health department parking lot is too teeny tiny, so we are looking at purchasing that little piece of property to tear it down, clean it up, and make it a parking lot for a health department.
Is it on Norris or is it on the wall?
It's on Norris. It's the property just north.
I, of course, I looked at the property and it needs to order out anyway. It's terrible. It's not livable the way they're explaining it. Of course, it doesn't have a parking lot. It's not, it's not even a board fixing. It needs to order out. So we bought it, and I didn't order it out. That would help the city here in another piece of white, to be honest with you.
Think the city going to chip in and help us buy it? Never hurts to ask. So the way I understand it, you negotiated the price downwards a little bit from what it was presented to me?
I got them down five thousand dollars. It's in the law, but it helps. And so it was fifty thousand, make it thirty, take forty-five thousand.
So to be fair, what's, oh, did I give you that talk? Um, there's a purchase agreement that you should all have a copy of, for the property at two thirty-seven Norris Avenue for a total purchase price of forty-five thousand dollars. Um, in fairness, uh, the county must follow Indiana law with respect to purchasing the property. And so there is language in this agreement that states, one, it's subject to county council approval of the funding. Um, and two, that the purchase price may not be, uh, the greater than the average of the two appraisals that must be conducted pursuant to Indiana law or the forty-five thousand dollars, whichever is less.
So you're asking for, one, to sign the purchase agreement and, two, to approve the appraisal?
Yes, so one, to approve the purchase agreement. I guess go ahead and start with that.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase agreement.
I'll say.
Unanimous.
And then secondly, there's a resolution to proceed with the acquisition. This one's a little bit different than ones we've done in the past um, because this was a last minute, um, ad at three o'clock yesterday. Thank you, Mr. Woodall. Um, so what this resolution says is that the commissioner's authorized the county attorney to appoint two individuals licensed to appraise real property, serve as appraisers of property. And Jerry, if you could help me with that, that would be wonderful.
I can see the appraisers if you need any.
You tell me who to appoint and I'll get them.
I'll get them. I'll tell you, I'll tell you today.
I'll make a motion to sign that resolution.
I'll say.
Unanimous. Yeah, I want you to show me where you, where this is.
I'm going to have Jerry check it out afterwards.
One, one thing I do need to know for the purchase, if, if all this is done, when will be the appropriate closing date? That's something I need to know.
It really depends on when we get the appraisals back and when council can approve the funding. So I would say, say it's October ninety days at most. At mo, I mean.
Maybe maybe it's quicker, but.
Maybe quicker, but.
It's not very quick, so.
Yeah, but I, I think council will need to meet. I, I don't know if it'll get brought up in the meeting in two weeks or not, but.
It will be, but you still will have, it depends on whether you're taking money for.
Right.
So that's going to be, if it were a case of, there was more than five days.
I'd say ninety, just to be safe, Jerry.
If we come in at sixty, they'll be glad. I said, put ninety, and if we get in there at sixty, they'll be happy.
Yeah, I mean, we could always do it quicker. It's.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they always say one report.
The cogs of government, that's all I'll say about that.
Government work slowly, I know.
Should have tapped this, sorry about that. Just, it's max.
There's a bunch of junk in that.
I gotta A S stamp for that, I know I should have.
There's a bunch of junk in that house, you want any part, or it's in there?
I'm out.
Really should have watched the stamp.
Need a new pen?
Holy moly!
There was about third place to sign, you know?
If you want to move on, I'll check them.
So.
I missed one.
Where's the other thing that you needed, just the resolution? Would it?
Yeah, yes. That really is all I have.
Okay. So Jenny, do you have something from the fairgrounds?
Yeah, the, um, I believe you should have received an email that had the designs, shape and.
Mmm.
Okay.
I did, apparently I didn't do it correctly.
That's okay, I brought extra. So that, uh, the last time we were here, I had requested, um, we were talking about replacing the rabbit and poultry barn out of the fairgrounds. You suggested to get some, a certified design by the engineer. So that's what we did. And that's what the list of documents that you have there before you is. As you will see, it is a basic sixty-five one hundred pole barn. This will, we would set the concrete in it. And we would agree to put the concrete at our expense. And y'all had said that you would be willing to cover the cost of the building itself. So that's where we are at. If we get your approval on these designs, then we could go ahead and get bids and get this put together, um, for the fair. We also have worked with, for, we're in the process of working with Rosakers on getting new cages and such for the building. So we're working on that as well.
That'll be a donation or paid for by you, correct?
Yeah.
A lot of shopping.
Yeah, donation probably from there.
Did you have a rough estimate of what this building had cost? Or you're not going to know until?
Since we put the concrete in there, no. Um, but like I said, you would basically just be paying for, you know, the building itself and the light. But we can get the bids put together, uh, get some seal bids and pack them for you. Okay, then, look.
Uh, would you proceed with this, sir? Man, we've thrown a lot at you. I, I feel, I actually feel guilty in this meeting for.
You shouldn't.
I've beaten up him or, or Alex.
I, I apologize, I'm too busy focusing on this. So what, whether, what's the question?
The question is, is, first of all, so we're going to have to go to council and ask. Because when we originally started this project two years ago, we were planning on playing, paying for this with the CARES Act money that we had been using for the other fairgrounds projects.
That's what I remember.
And then that money, I guess, got transferred to a different account to do other things. So I don't know where we're at with the money. So I don't want to order her to solicit bids. I, it would be nice if we had a rough estimate, dollar figure of what we're talking about. So we could go to council and say, hey, is this, is this?
Sixty, seventy thousand. Yeah, that was a recollection, but I, I don't have an exact, we were estimating between sixty and seventy thousand.
And then county highway is going to tear down the two buildings, so that'd be zero cost other than maybe a couple dumpsters, but. So is there a way, Dave, to make that happen out of that original?
No, not out of that. But there's other, there's other avenues if the council agrees with it. But you're not going to get that building down for sixty or seventy thousand. But any good bottom line is, I mean.
I want to get the cart before the horse. So do you, so do you ask them to go ahead and request bids? And then once we got a bid, we got dollar figures to go by and then come to the council?
You're going to break it to the council with a dollar figure.
I guess you, I guess you bid it, worst thing you do is don't award the bid. You table the bids and then you go to the council and then go from there. Because I'm like, Dave, I don't think you can build this building for sixty thousand dollars.
It might be.
Especially with the concrete.
It might be seventy.
Was what we were going to do.
Yeah.
But you better have, I hope you guys save extra because it's.
We were already doing some surgery. We've got some.
Okay, I say, because concrete's up to about two hundred dollars a yard.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure that building can be built for that. I'd say we bid it and then go from there.
Okay, I guess go ahead and solicit bids.
Okay.
Do we need to vote on that or they just give it?
All right.
Get at least three.
Oh, we have definitely three.
Get all you can get.
Now, do you want the concrete that I was, you know, on the separate?
Yes.
Okay.
If you guys are paying, it needs to be separate.
All right, I wanted to be sure that we had it presented the way that you all wanted it.
Yeah, you can just put it out to the side or something so we know what it is.
Will do, thank you.
Thank you. So I have Sherry on here for speed limit ordinance.
We had a gentleman come in the office. And west of the Hayden School, there are kids that walk for a short distance and they rely on thirty mile an hour speed limit. From seven hundred west, west about seventeen hundred feet.
Did you have Kenny look at it already?
I have not had Kenny look at it.
But you said there's kids that are walking.
And our kids.
The, the school bus won't pick them up so far away.
But we've always needed Kenny or somebody to look over it before we do it.
It's coming into Hayden there where there's, there's a lot of houses. Going out, um, on Base Road, going east, it's a thirty mile an hour speed limit to the quarry.
It's a lot?
Thirty.
Here's the school and then Harris.
What is it currently in that stretch?
There's no posted speed limit.
It's in.
It's coming right down into Hayden. I think it's a good idea.
I broke it.
Charlie didn't need it anyway.
Charlie, you're broke.
I'm out. I was agreeing, yeah, I was agreeing with you. You didn't have to break, you didn't have to break my sign.
On this one, since it says school zone, I'm okay with not getting Kenny's.
Oh, I agree with it, but the legal way is not the way we usually do these.
Typically, you have to get Cody or Kenny to go look at it.
And that's probably not even legal from the way I understand it. You're supposed to do a.
Traffic, traffic. Do traffic studies.
Took them, and you could fight it in court if you don't have the traffic study.
Do you think there's something that says we're going to stop in the distance for kids in school zones or not?
It's county road, it's up to county.
From that intersection east, it's twenty-five mile an hour school zone. It's posted there.
They're coming from different areas.
Yeah, but it's fifty-five right down to that, so.
I'm good with it. If you want to move that way, I don't care.
Worst case scenario is we do it and then someone gets a ticket and then they fight the ticket and it gets thrown out because we didn't do the traffic study.
And after this meeting, the line and line.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks, Shane.
I think a lot of people know.
Well, I live in that area. And I know there's a lot of traffic going through there, there's a lot of fast traffic. You're not supposed to drive, you're not the truck. And let me tell you, there's, there's cars applying to that.
I'm okay with it, Charlie, if you want to go ahead and make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Unanimous. Is that all you had?
That's all I have.
Did you decide anything on the barricade?
I haven't had a chance to talk to Matt yet. You have a minute, go ahead and talk about it.
You can, that way they both know what's going on.
Bridge one eighty-eight is behind old US fifty on the east side. It's getting more holes in it. So we need to get a barricade up in the center that will stay, that people can't run up. We found some water barricades that intertwine with each other. And then the water, we put water in. It's just shy of thirty thousand dollars. If we could have all the way across it.
The one leaving on no fifty.
Oh.
The big one.
How I get to my house, okay.
You know, we put the stand-ups and they only lasted three days.
If it affects Alex negatively, you set the whole bridge down.
But tell him the cost of the other barricade.
Barricade that USI come up with is a hundred and twenty thousand.
Buying a barricade, not a bridge.
What's it do?
Huh?
What does it do?
Prevents people from driving in a certain area.
The bridge is separating in the middle. There's an old bridge and a new bridge, they attached them, and they're starting to come apart.
Can you get a rupture set in time underneath?
No, you're talking a, what was the figure, rough figure?
Twelve.
Twelve point five million?
Twelve point five million.
Yeah.
And we don't know how we're going to pay for it?
We inherited that bridge.
From the state.
Nice gift. The gift, the gift that keeps on giving.
But what we're afraid of, let's say we pull those little, we had those little posts, I don't know if you've seen them, but cars keep running over them. If a sickle would run down that, it's that far apart, his wheel is going to get in it and off he's going to go, and then we're going to be in a lawsuit. It's just dangerous.
I don't understand why we can't put those steel, those big steel, uh, plates down the center of it like what O'Meara does. You can go ahead and leave it the way it is until we can figure out how to fix it.
We can check into it. I just, I had her looking up other options because when she said the hundred and some thousand, I was like, there's no way. That was the cheapest thing we've come up with so far.
Why don't you check and see if we can put those steel plates like what O'Meara uses if they're doing a temporary waterline patch or whatever, you know, they put a big steel plate down that you can drive over? See if we can put those, you know, through the center of it instead of barricading it.
What we had works awesome if they just stay off of it, but they, you put them up, some kid just runs right down them, breaks every one of them off. They splat them, they won't be there three days.
They weren't the last time.
Oh, yeah, we stick them back out and they're just gone.
You know how you can figure out who's doing it, just throw them with concrete. That was a joke. It was a joke, please don't take me seriously on that. I'd say check on the steel things first and then if that's not going to work. Those are expensive. Those big steel plates are expensive. I mean, it's, somebody told me one time what those cost and I was like, really? I don't know.
They're, I mean, they're still going to be.
But they wouldn't have to be back, I mean.
Oh, I'm sure there's guy, I'm, I'm sure there's stipulations as to how thick they have to be and all that good stuff, so. Okay, all right, we'll just check on that.
Probably need to check with, uh, USI and make sure that can even be done with those two bridges being.
Okay. Yeah, we just need to keep people off that zone.
I mean, no other option, we'll have to close it. And that's not going to be good.
How, how wide is the gap?
On the west end, it's probably that wide now. At least four inches.
Noticeable when I drive over it.
And you don't think we could, um, take a piece of that thick insulation and drive down?
I mean, you can see all the weather.
And then pour concrete over the top of it? Just have the, the thick insulation hold the concrete until it sets?
I don't know.
And fill that gap with concrete?
Trouble is, it moves. It's going to keep coming out. And the concrete's breaking away there as it comes on the bumpment there at the, I've had fixed holes on it probably, what, twice in a month?
Yeah, we've already patched it a few times and it just keeps falling through us and we just have to continue patching.
Yeah, I mean, it's a problem coming quicker than later. We thought it was going to be a while, but it's not going to be.
Okay. All right, we'll explore that avenue and we'll see. I'm getting good news today. Very good news today. Anybody got any good?
Fall off the brakes next week.
I'm having surgery, so no, that's not good news.
I think you can. Usually they won't let you go.
Anybody in the crowd got anything?
It's none, none, because it's a little.
Okay, you can.
Name of the lead, Golden, I live in Hayden. When I thought up about the, uh, speed limit sign there on Base Road. They've always been a speed limit sign on each end of that road. Stop sign, stop sign, thirty mile an hour. And it'd be where the kids. Now, the thirty mile an hour going out of town, it's here there. But coming into town, there's no stop sign. Cause when it got bush-hauled down through, the sign got tore down and ended up in the scrap metal bit. And, uh, since I lived there, they tore down a telephone pole, broke it down, tore the fence down, ran over my mailbox, on a kind of people is flying up down the road. And if you had a stop sign, I mean, speed limit sign, now maybe they would pay attention to it and. And if you have a stop sign, I mean, speed limit sign there, maybe they would pay attention to it and slow down because that hill, if you wanted to. I think cars come over that hill, you could see under the, undercarried all the way from my house, you know, that's how fast they're on that road. And one of them days, the kids going to get hit from walking back towards school. I had a county guy a couple years ago out there, sergeant, came out there to investigate and he said that road is. Too narrow and everything, be running over thirty mile an hour, he stood up top the hill and had his radar on a few cars and was a shooting, they just slowed down. And he said, you know, we need some stop sign there, but that's all we, part of the gap. And if we don't do something there in Hayden where our kids, somebody's going to get killed and somebody, you know, speed limit sign there. You know, how are you going to sue the guy because he didn't know what speed limit was there? And if they cost no money, somebody come out there and put a speed limit sign there. We got one going out of town, don't have one coming into town. I live, do have a look from the school on Base Road there.
So Charlie, just instruct your guys to, if you need several signs, just decorate it up.
We're going to put signs up on it.
That's all appreciated, thank you for letting me speak.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Don't forget the no truck signs.
I checked them, they're still coming out of the quarry, it still says no trucks.
You got it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that there is no truck, I'm going to pass it, thank you.
Not me.
You did slow them down. But anyway, I appreciate you did, you did slow them down, so they ain't coming through there. Nice, just in one, I did, but yeah, they slow down.
Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you, and I so appreciate it letting me speak.
Anybody else got anything? All entertain, a motion to approve prior minutes?
Make the motion.
Say it.
Unanimous? Make the mo, all entertain a motion to sign payroll plans.
Make the motion.
I'll say it.
Unanimous? Did I sign off speaking? Did I sign that burden, burden band lift and pass it down?
Oh, we signed so many things, I can't remember.
Yeah.
I did?
I'm sure you did, but I'll check.
I think you did when you first done it, but I won't swear to.
Lifted and signed. So you can go back to. Your neighbors.
If it don't rain in a week or so, it might be better.
I signed the original about seat hearing. Check in and double checking.
So we got signed it?
So we're good on that, dude?
We signed it. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry.
You're welcome.
I know concrete's at least two hundred. We, we get a disk, you know, so it's got to be something to be honorable.
I get it, I get it. What was that? Oh yes, yes, yes. What is it?
My goodness.
Oh.
You guys got anything else you need me to sign?
I think that's the last one.
No way it's going, there's probably something working.
Those kind of these things are always sawn upside down. Every time we sign one, we got to flip it over. Every time, I mean.
Because you're opening it up upside down.
I guess, every time I flip one up, it's, it's up there. Let's see.
You guys all finished signing?
This is the way.
Last chance, anybody in the crowd got anything, if not, we're entertaining motion to your. Motion to your.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say it.
Unanimous?
Jerry, we have the last two.